Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30. I will call the Tuesday, October 6 regular meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Ladine.
Here.
Counselor Van Sickle.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Sutherland.
Here.
Counselor Kern.
Here.
And Counselor Dobek is excused this evening. First item in business is item number three, approval of the minutes from the September 15 regular meeting and the September 22 special meeting.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Ludwig to approve both sets of minutes as their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 6.1 is the mayor's report.
Thank you, counselors. I will, I have a little bit more to report down during the Plan Commission, but mostly what has kept us busy over the last couple of weeks is finishing up the whole budget process. We had to look at a couple of budgets, most of which are ready and going to finance right now. There are a couple of other policy projects that we are likely to take on in the coming weeks that you can look for and start thinking about. The first is the travel policy. Most of you know that I've wanted to look at some changes to make that a little bit more accountable and unbiased, namely, the mayor right now has quite a bit of authority to authorize, to decide what will be authorized and what will not, and I think we should just have a little bit more uniform written into policy, well, policy. And so I'll make a couple of recommendations, we'll discuss with finance and then send that to the Finance Committee. And then the other that may not come up in the next couple of weeks, but we're certainly working on, is a potential permanent work from home policy. Obviously, during the pandemic, we have had a number of employees that worked at home in some capacity, and what that showed us, obviously, is that some employees, especially administrative employees, are able to work at home without a significant loss of efficiency, and in some cases with an increase in efficiency. And so what we wanted to look at is, is there a way that we can incorporate into our city policies ways to occasionally excuse employees to home where there would still be some work expectation, and to use that almost as an employee benefit. We know that there are circumstances in employees' lives, from minor illness to family illness to just the kind of chaotic stuff that can happen to any of us that might make it hard to come into the office, but where we might still be able to ask them to work. A great example would be snow days, where they're perfectly capable of working, they just don't want to drive on the streets. Complicated policy, obviously, we have hundreds of employees, dozens of departments, everybody doing different jobs, so I've asked department heads to generate memos and make recommendations, and hopefully we'll zero in on something and forward that to the Human Resources Committee. That is my report.
Item 6.2, the mayor is recommending approval to appoint Tom Kurtz to the Liability Claims Committee, Kathleen Laxo to the Historic Preservation Committee, and reappoint Matt Osterlund to the Historic Preservation Committee.
Before there's a motion, if there's no objection, I will ask that the minutes reflect that Kathleen Laxo would be appointed as the historian on the Historic Preservation Committee. That is an official role.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Ludwig.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Thank you, counselors.
Item 7.1 is standing, 7.1 is the Finance Committee, recommendations from September 10th. First item is report from the Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me give you a quick synopsis of what we're doing in the Finance Committee. First off, going forward, this Thursday, we're going to have a Finance Committee meeting, and there'll be, we're going to have a special meeting ahead of time, approximately an hour, talk about, from the company about hospitalization. So we have a recommendation to approve the plan for next year, and we're going to meet with him and talk about that. We're also going to talk about, not in the special meeting, but in a regular scheduled meeting, the library funding $10,000 request. Hopefully, the librarian will be there to explain this to us, so we can get some more information. We've been somewhat busy in the last month. We've had another special meeting. We, the hotel motel tax, or penalty, if you would, has been worked out through a 5% adjustment if you don't pay your hotel motel tax on time, and I think we did a good job with that. There's a lot of discussion, spent a lot of time. We also have a new hotel motel plan going into effect as a 1-1, so assuming it gets voted on. We also passed a, the high-value network for the insurance, the medical travel insurance, which was, we worked on that for a long time, and I think it'll work out. We were very hopeful it will. Just a quick, anyone who doesn't know, they have a, our insurance company has a high-value network, and most of those companies are not in the Twin Ports, and most of it's going to be orthopedic, but if you go to the Twin, most of them are in the Twin Cities, I don't say all, but there'll be a savings there, and we're going to reimburse the employee for some money for going down. And we expect the savings to be great, and we expect the quality to be equal or better. So we're happy with that. We worked on that for quite a while. We also worked on, going ahead, what's going to come up in the next few months. Well, we're going to look at the CIP again, just try and improve that, if it needs improvement, we have to look at that. We're going to try and get all the insurances, not counting hospitalization, and probably workman's comp, those would be two separate, all the rest of them, we're trying to, try and get them on one date, okay? And sometime in the middle of the, hopefully in the middle of the summer, so we can put those off for bids. It's a, it's a little, I don't know this for a fact, but every month, some policies come due, so we have to have a little better system there to try and organize that and put them off for bids, so we're going to work on that. The Finance Department Assistant has done a great job. We have the property records up to date now, she'd been working on that for quite a while, so that's, that's worked well. And so we did, that's coming to us, and we're going to look at that, and hopefully, we're going to, and we're trying to develop a work schedule, a 12-month work schedule, so these things that come up to us will come up to us annually, quarterly, yearly, or maybe monthly. So we're, we're working on that, we're trying to get that down. That's a, it's a big task, and...
My, we're the mayor of the City Council, to my immediate left, he would be happy if he were still on there, because this year, we're not going to talk, oh, I'm sorry.
This year, we're not going to go through policies and procedures, but it will, I'm sure, be on the, on the next year, so that's what we've been doing, so Jim, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, counselor. If you so chose, you could at this point move to approve all of the business of both the September 10th and the September 23 meetings.
I have to read the resolution and ordinance.
Oh, I apologize. We'll take them separately, the resolution has to be read.
Okay.
And the ordinance. So we'll just do these items one at a time.
Okay, so is there action on 7.1, recommendations for approval?
Second.
The motion by Counselor Ludwig and second by Elm is to approve item 7.1, the business of the September 10th meeting. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.2 is the Finance Committee recommendations from September 3rd. One is a resolution providing relief of penalties from hotel motel tax.
The motions by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Ludwig, is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries.
And item two is approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 74 relating to hotel motel and rooming house tax.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
7.3 is the Plan Commission recommendation from September 16th and a report from the Chair.
This was a very quick record-setting meeting, counselors, but I just want to let you know that at the next Plan Commission meeting, I will, or I plan to present a recommendation for a consultant to help us prepare our comprehensive plan. You'll remember, we set aside $100,000 in the CIP for that document. It's been 20 years, I think, since, long enough anyway, since we passed our first comprehensive plan, and it's definitely time for an update. I'm pretty excited about it. This is a foundational document that combines every other plan we've ever worked on in the last few years, and will encompass the plans we are going to work on in the coming years, and will make significant recommendations, setting the goals and direction for our city for the next 20 years. So I want to take it very seriously. I have dramatically expanded the library in the mayor's office to learn as much as I can in the coming weeks, so you're all free to come up and take a look at those books if you want to get spun up with me, but I think it's going to be an exciting rest of the year on the Plan Commission.
We just need a recommendation to approve the remainder, 7.3?
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Elm, to approve the Certified Survey Map, which is the only business from the Plan Commission. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
7.4 is Public Safety Committee recommendations from September 16th. Report from the Chair.
Chairman Sutherland.
Thank you. So this committee, we've rarely met, but I think we're going to start seeing this committee more and more every month, now that all parking-related matters will be coming to the Public Safety Committee. Last meeting went very smooth, everything was approved unanimously. So that being said, I'll keep this short, I'm going to ask to make a motion to approve everything on this item.
Yeah, and actually, I apologize, Counselor Sutherland, we, I know I recommended that to you, but we have to read the ordinances individually.
Okay. Well, just for the record, every, you know, these all passed unanimously, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Item two is an ordinance amending the traffic code, parking by adding no parking on either side at any time on Spartan Road.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Fennessy. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item three is an ordinance amending the traffic code, parking by adding North 31st Street west of the Frontage Road to Oaks Avenue, exempt from calendar parking, and no parking on the odd north side, and no parking 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item number four is an ordinance amending the traffic code, stopping, standing, and parking to create a subsection to include in any designated lane, fire lane zone.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
And also, an item four, an ordinance to amend the traffic code, or Section 1.14, citations and deposits for certain violations.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item five, an ordinance to amend Section 112-251, penalties, forfeitures, and other non-moving violations and contesting non-moving traffic citations.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.5 is the Public Works Committee recommendations from September 16th. Report from the Chair.
Chair Van Sickle.
Thank you. You'll notice a couple of items in here that there are several ongoing discussions, and that has helped us keep a better eye on different initiatives and monitoring them closely during implementation. You'll probably notice that 44th Avenue East is coming up again, and that's an issue around ongoing access, maintenance, and cleanup. So that's something that we will continue to work on. You'll notice a couple of stop signs in here, and we're trying to approve these stop signs based on a broader, more comprehensive understanding of placement and how it interacts with the, the street over and the next street over by pulling up larger maps and seeing how it all works together, and that helps create more predictability and hopefully the safer atmosphere that Counselors Bender and Elm requested at this last meeting. So I think one of the biggest pieces on here is, is that the Public Works would like to thank the Parks Crew in Public Works. There has been a Titanic effort around mapping and policy and planning, particularly with Russ, who created the outline for the sidewalk clearing plan in 2021, and his depth of thinking was really impressive in terms of the route he created and making sure that you could start at the shop and end at the shop, or reduce backtracking and things like that. So there's plenty of work ahead, but just want to acknowledge that effort, and it's exciting, and of course, thanks to the council for funding, for funding the PRIN off there. And I just want to call out Chris Carlson for receiving the grant to replace decades-old dilapidated bus shelters across the city. Thanks for writing that grant, it's really impressive, and I can't wait to see them whenever that happens, and we give up the match. Thank you. Sorry, one thing. Item six, the three-way stop at Spartan Drive and Catlin Avenue. This was a continuing conversation, and the SPD, the school district, actually pulled back on this request, so the committee took no action, we did not deny it, so we just asked that the council also take no action on item six.
I just want to clarify, that's a little bit new thing. We've come across this before, and we've handled it in a couple of different ways. Whenever business goes in front of the committee, whatever they do, if it is the council's ultimate decision, it's always going to come to the council. And so the committee can recommend you approve it, recommend you deny it, or they can make no recommendation at all. No matter what, it will come before the council. In this case, the committee has taken no action, but I was at that meeting, and in reality, they were really recommending denial, that you, in fact, take no action. So we'll handle that in a second. You technically have the right to approve it anyways, if you wanted to, but that's just how that's going to work. So committees may, from time to time, deny action, but you'll still cede the business at the council. Okay, we can go straight into the ordinance.
Okay. Item number five is an ordinance amending the traffic code stops by adding and installing a four-way stop at North 23rd and Hewitt Avenue, and also an ordinance to approve amending the traffic code by adding and installing a four-way stop at North 17th Street and Hewitt Avenue.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, the second by Counselor Elm, to approve both ordinances. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. And unless there is a motion regarding the three-way stop at Spartan Drive, I will proceed.
Item 9.1 is an ordinance introduced by Mayor Payne, amending standing committees by creating the Administration Committee. This was referred from the September 15th council meeting.
This already has a motion to approve, the second from the previous meeting, so is there discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
Last time this came up, I, I was against creating a new committee, and that position stands with me. I, I think the current structure can handle it, I think leadership in the City Council can handle it if some of these things come up, so I am opposed to this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Van Sickle, you're light, isn't it? Counselor Fennessy?
It was, it was last meeting that I initially expressed my support for this committee and the, you know, the need for it. It was at, also at the same meeting that a couple counselors pressed me for some specific examples of when this committee would actually be, be useful and beneficial. And collectively, all of us could only think of maybe one example or two examples. And, and right now, even three weeks later from that meeting in the agenda packet, we just have a couple examples of in the past where the, a committee like this would have been beneficial, and then a couple more examples of in the future, kind of what that committee would be, could be used for. But the thing is, most of the examples in the agenda for the future use, I believe, would be more of a disservice if we were to pull those from their existing standing committees. They would normally hear those. For example, in the, in the agenda packets, it's listed that the committee like this would take on health insurance review and changes, the golf course, Barker's Island Marina, the overall budget process, employee travel and training reimbursement. And right now, they're, they're cited as possible improper uses of the Finance Committee, but every single one of those revolves strongly around finance and should be looked at through the lens of, of finance. So I think by pulling those out of finance and putting them in a separate committee, I think we'd be doing a pretty big disservice to those items. Further, I'd certainly be remiss if I didn't point out that we're looking at expanding our current committees, while at the same time, we have committees that we're not really utilizing. We have a CIT committee that's only met twice this year, we have a standing city-county committee that's only met twice since it's been formed three years ago. License and fees is set up to meet monthly, they haven't met all year. Public safety, set up to meet monthly, they've only met about three times this year. And at the end of it, I've, I've heard no complaints from the committee chairs of things that are going to these committees that don't belong. I've heard no complaints from committee members that they're being overworked in the specific committees, and at a time when we're severely underutilizing some of our current committees, we, and we can't come up with a real significant reasoning to justify the creation of yet another committee, it almost seems as we're just creating another committee for the purpose of creating another committee in an effort to solve a problem that probably doesn't exist. So for me, I see no valid reason to support creating another committee when the current system that we have is working just fine.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
We have, we need a roll call. Division, yeah, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
And Counselor Van Sickle.
I'm sorry, can I just make one comment? I think that, I think that however we get the work done is fine, and as long as we get the work done, and if committees are underutilized, that, that might be a good thing.
Are we in discussion?
I'm sorry, can I, can I speak or not?
Yes, Counselor Van Sickle has the floor. Discussion can resume during the vote.
I just have a clarifying question. If Public Works is not busy, or Public Safety is not busy, how is that not the responsible, this responsibility of the Chair or those members? You know, when I, when I see things out in the community, I bring those to Public Works, or when I have policy ideas or questions, I bring those to my agenda. Any counselors can do that. I mean, with that said, though, you know, when, when we bring up issues and, you know, departments are not sure where they go, or where they go, or who should take care of it, I guess as long as that can be squashed internally, I, I don't care what committee talks about it, as long as not creating this committee doesn't get in the way, if, if that makes sense. I'm going to vote no.
We are back in discussion. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, we will begin the roll call again.
Start over. Counselor Ladine.
Yes.
Counselor Van Sickle.
No.
Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Counselor Sweeney.
No.
Counselor Fennessy.
No.
Counselor Elm.
Yes.
Counselor Ludwig.
Yes.
Counselor Sutherland.
No.
Counselor Kern.
No.
Counselor, oh, Counselor Dobek is excused.
The motion fails.
Item 10.1, Assistant Public Works Director Carlson is recommending approval of the City of Superior Active Transportation Plan, and there is a presentation.
Okay, let's do this first.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about our Superior Active Transportation Plan. This is a conversation that probably started about three years ago, when we started really talking about putting together a comprehensive ADA-compliant plan that would address pedestrian and bicycle traffic in the city. It's kind of meant to be an overall comprehensive plan that would be both usable, and most importantly, safe for the community. We're here tonight, after about three years, to present the final draft plan, as before you today, for approval. Approval of the plan tonight, in a way, kind of feels like a finish line, but really, in a lot, in a more real way, it's a really starting line for all of what comes next. I mean, having a plan is great, but right now, it's just words on paper. What becomes really important is when we take that plan and move it to actual actions and changes within the community that benefit the community. So your approval of the plan tonight would really be a big step in that direction of legitimizing the plan, legitimizing the recommendations, and giving us a green light to start moving forward on these recommendations the next, you know, the following weeks, months, and years that are to come. Before we get into the bones of the plan, a couple acknowledgements I want to make. First, it's to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. This plan was largely made possible through funding by their Transportation Alternatives Program, the TAP grant. As Counselor Van Sickle noted earlier, the city, it's kind of a tangent, but the city also recently received word that we were awarded the next round of TAP funding for about $370,000 to evaluate and replace and improve all of our bus shelters in the city. So the DOT TAP grant's been really great for the city, it's a really great program. Hope to see it continue. Also want to quickly acknowledge the administrative support that's been a part of this, part of this planning effort. Mayor Payne and the whole council's been advocating for the, for this plan ever since we started doing it, and that's been, that's been really great for the plan. As I say, it sounds like me being sucking up a little bit, but the reality is that a plan like this doesn't happen without the support of top administration and elected officials, so thanks for that. Lastly, I want to thank Tool Design, their consultants on the project. In a second, I'm going to hand the podium and the microphone over to Kevin Lickie, who's behind me, to kind of go through the whole plan and kind of give you a better understanding of the plan, the background, and the recommendations. But working with Tools, been great, they've been great partners on the project. The quality of the plan is really largely thanks to the knowledge and experience of Kevin and his team at Tool Design, so it's been great working with them. So with that, we'll get to the actual plan, and we'll hand it over to Kevin.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let's see if we get things up on the screen here. My name, as Chris mentioned, is Kevin Lickie. I work for Tool Design, we're a national planning and engineering firm, and I'm based in Madison, so have been coming up over the past 18 months or so to work on this plan with the city. We wrapped up the draft plan in late February or so, we had planned on presenting to all of you in mid-March, and then, well, we know how that went. So here I am tonight. I will note a few points where we may make some small adjustments to the plan because of some things that have changed in the interim period. So I'll be brief with my presentation tonight. If you reviewed the plan, you saw that there was a lot of information, I just want to touch on kind of the main chapters and some of the process that we went through as we developed the plan. So the overall planned content, these are the different chapters that are available, or that comprise the plan. I'll briefly touch on each one as we go through. So, here we go. The, the vision for the plan that was developed was that we envision Superior as a healthy city where walking and bicycling are encouraged as attractive, safe, comfortable, and convenient options for residents and visitors at every age and life stage. This vision was developed by the Plan Steering Committee, following input from the public, different people that we talked... different people that we talked to. It was really meant to lay out a big picture vision for biking and walking and active transportation in the city. In the plan itself, the vision is supported by a number of goals and then specific actions and recommendations that will help Superior achieve this vision over time. The introduction chapter gives general background information about the plan. It talks about why to invest in active transportation, some of the benefits that come about from it, touches on the plan and approach that we took, the different analysis that we took to look at where improvements would be recommended for bicycling and walking. I won't get into the detail of that now. It provides the vision that I just mentioned and the goals for the plan, and then provides an overview of the public and stakeholder engagement that we conducted throughout the plan and process. The second chapter gets into the existing active transportation conditions in the city. So we did a review of the city's existing plans and policies that impact active transportation. We looked at existing facilities that are out there, sidewalks, trails, bike lanes, other low-traffic streets that may be good right now for walking and bicycling. Did a number of technical analyses to look at these, looked at pedestrian and bicycle crashes that have occurred over the years. All of this was to get a good picture of what current conditions are like in the city now for walking and biking, where improvements may be necessary, and where things are working well. The next chapter gets into policy and programmatic recommendations, and these are really focused around the five Es of active transportation planning. This is kind of a method that's been used for many years in, in the industry and by advocates just to take a holistic look at how we're planning for making the city a better place to walk and bike for people. So we look at recommendations related to encouragement. How can the city encourage more walking and biking if the city feels that it's a valuable activity and action? Education, so that goes for educating people about opportunities for walking and biking, but also educating all road users about the rules of the road, where people should bike when they're in the street, how cars should interact, and drivers should interact with people who are walking and biking, taking a holistic view of educating all users of our transportation system. Enforcement, so ensuring that we're enforcing the existing rules of the road for all users of the public right of way. Engineering, which is really getting at actual facilities that are recommended in the plan. So this may be new trail segments, it might be new sidewalks, it might be adding bike lanes to existing streets. And then evaluation, so measuring what the city is doing, looking at how many miles of trails or sidewalks there are in the city, and seeing if that number, how that number's changing over time. Looking at the number of crashes that involve people walking and biking, and seeing if those numbers hopefully drop over time. So measuring what the city is doing as it undertakes the recommendations of the plan. The next chapter provides a brief summary of the facilities and treatments from the Walkway and Bikeway Toolbox. And the Walkway and Bikeway Toolbox, I'll touch on separately, but it's, it's a document that gives a lot more detail about some of the specifics of how to implement different biking and walking facilities. It's really intended as a tool for city staff to use as they look at how to design different facilities. But in the plan itself, we put in a brief summary of what those facility types are, just so that people reviewing the plan understand what the different recommendations mean and what different technical terms may be used in the plan. Chapter five starts to lay out the actual recommendations for an active transportation network. And when people look at bicycling and walking plans, usually they flip through to quickly find a map to see what the recommendations for specific facilities are. That's usually the thing of most interest to people. And, and so this chapter starts to lay out what that view was. We took a pedestrian approach that's focused along busy streets, bus routes, and near schools. We did not look at recommending sidewalks on every single street in the city. There are many, many low-traffic streets where sidewalks don't currently exist and would be a very low priority for installing sidewalks. Where we did look is where people may be walking along busier streets, where you can logically expect people to be walking near schools or to access bus stops, things like that. We also laid out a bikeway network that designates a connected network throughout the city to connect parks, schools, neighborhoods, commercial areas, kind of a wide variety of destinations that we heard were important from the public. And, and the chart here just shows some of the existing mileage of different bikeway types in the city, and then what the plan proposes for those different bikeway types. I have a couple of those maps that I just referenced. At the scale on the screen here, it will be hard to tell, but the plan presents them in more detail. The first map here is for sidewalk and intersection improvements, and the kind of yellowish areas that are outlined on the screen are those pedestrian focus areas, again, within proximity of schools where we expect or hope that people may be walking more along the busier street corridors and along those bus routes. The red lines represent streets that currently don't have sidewalk on either side of the street and fall within those pedestrian focus areas. So these are streets that we would recommend working to get a sidewalk on at least one side of the street. The next map presents the BikeWay Network, and this is a network that will take time to develop. Some of the recommendations that I'll touch on, I'll touch on timeframes for all of it, but this would be an ultimate kind of vision for the BikeWay Network. It presents different facility types from low-traffic neighborhood streets that would be designated as good streets for people to use and help guide people along those streets. Those often parallel busier streets that, say, a family might not be comfortable biking on, even if there was a bike lane, but still allow people to get to destinations that might be along that busier street. It proposes a number of trail segments and connections. And again, what's shown here on the full map is a long-term vision. Again, it will take time for it to come to be, and as things change in the city, this is something that should be revisited over time because conditions may change along certain streets, opportunities may present themselves to put a bikeway on a different street than what's recommended in the plan. Those opportunities need to be looked at as, as we move forward. Chapter six gets into really a lot of the detail on implementing the facility recommendations of the plan. It includes specific implementation strategies, provides opinions of probable costs, so what we think it would cost to build these things out. Again, until you begin to actually design facilities and start to look at getting bids, it's, it can be challenging to estimate. The sidewalk construction that's outlined in the plan includes approximately eight miles of sidewalk with an estimated cost of approximately $1.9 million. We also include eight specific locations along Tower Avenue and East Second Street for pedestrian crossing improvements, those being some of the busiest streets in the city. And the ones that we heard from the public are often a barrier. It's challenging for people to get across. They worry about crossing those streets. So we recommended specific locations for those crossings. On the bike side, we broke projects into short-term, medium-term, and long-term. And again, the buckets that specific projects fall into may change over time. What we looked at was, one, the ease of implementation for projects. So projects that are relatively easy and perhaps relatively inexpensive to implement fell into more short-term bucket. As projects get more challenging or more costly to implement, they went into the medium or longer-term buckets. And, and you can see some of our cost estimates again here for that. We also, as we talked to the public in looking at the overall BikeWay Network, asked people about what priorities were. And the plan includes seven priority bikeway corridors. Most of these provide cross-city connections and access. These were ones that people called out as, it would be great to have a connection that, say, connected the Osagi Trail and the Millennium Trail. We've got these two great trails in the city. Can we tie them together? There are some north-south ones that are also shown in that opportunity, in that, in the priority bikeways corridor section. And it provides some, an overview of different funding opportunities that are available. As Chris mentioned in his introduction, this plan and process was largely funded through a grant from Wisconsin DOT. The city has just received another grant from that same pool of money to upgrade transit shelters. There's opportunities for future funding through that. There's opportunities to tie these projects in with other street and roadway projects that will happen over time as well. The last chapter of the plan outlines maintenance of the pedestrian and bikeway network. As Counselor Van Sickle mentioned before, there's been discussion over snow clearing of sidewalks and trails and other things. The maintenance section talks about maintenance in two different regards. One is longer-term, ongoing maintenance that facilities need, patching cracks, fixing sidewalks where trees have lifted portions of it so that you maintain accessibility and maintain a trip-free surface for people to travel on. And then it also gets into more seasonal maintenance, primarily winter maintenance. So ensuring that facilities are still available to use year-round, that we're not putting in facilities that are really only usable, optimistically, eight months out of the year. That can vary, obviously. So strategies for, for that maintenance as well. The, as I mentioned, as part of the plan, we developed a few additional documents. The primary one is the Walkway and Bikeway Toolkit. This summarizes and provides guidance on the implementation and use of 21 different facilities and treatments for walking and biking. Again, it's a resource primarily for city staff. It draws on national best practices and guidance that's available from a variety of documents. It gives it to them in a more concise document, but then also includes references so that if they need more detail, they can do that. We also prepared an Active Transportation Plan Summary Document that briefly presents what many of the recommendations of the plans are. There are a couple brief revisions that I'd like to touch on. Since our draft was developed, the, the primary change is that the ZAGSTER bike-share system has shut down, and that wasn't because of poor performance here. The company that runs it shut down all of their operations across the country. So there's some language that I propose that be included in any action taken by the council tonight. And, and this can be provided to you additionally afterwards. The first is that there's a discussion on page 16 of the existing bike-share system. Because this no longer exists, we propose updating it with the language that's here, which I'll read. "In 2018 and 2019, ZAGSTER operated a bike-share system in Superior with 20 bikes distributed between four stations. The system allowed users to rent bikes for trips around town on a pay-as-you-go basis or with monthly or annual memberships. The bike-share system was in operation largely during warmer months, with the system closed during the winter. While successful locally, ZAGSTER shut down its national operations, including Superior's bike-share system, in early 2020. The city recognizes the value of making bikes easily available for people who do not own a bicycle or who are visiting Superior without a bicycle. The city will continue to investigate options for a new bike-share system to serve residents and visitors." Related, on page 29, there was a recommendation that referenced continuing to support the ZAGSTER system as it exists, and we've changed that to make it more general in nature. "Support a bike-share program in Superior. The city should investigate options for a bike-share program to replace the ZAGSTER bike-share program. Such a program could be run by a private vendor or by the city." There are a couple other minor mentions of ZAGSTER throughout the document that I will be updating to remove as well as I finalize the documentation. So as was mentioned in the introduction, this plan really sets a vision for walking and biking in the city and lays out a lot of specific recommendations. The plan itself and adoption of the plan does not commit the city to any specific actions, but I hope that if the plan is adopted, that the city staff and all of you on the council really push to implement many of the recommendations of the plan. Specific implementation steps that come up, many of them, especially any of them with any, any real cost impacts for, for construction, are projects that will come back to the council for review at that time. So the, the plan lays out a guiding document for the city as it looks at things long-term. It is something that I assume will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan that the mayor mentioned earlier. And I'm happy to take any questions that people may have at this time.
This item is up for action tonight, but are there questions in advance? Counselor Fantasy.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple. Is this, do we want to tackle these questions now or refer it to a committee? Do you have a preference?
Uh, no, this is up for approval tonight, so we can take the questions now.
Okay. One of the, one of the first slides you had, it, I wrote down here, I didn't catch the whole thing, but it says something to do with the overall vision and direction of this project is that we become a city where walking and bicycling are encouraged and safe. Where, where do you think we are in that, in that point? If, at a scale of one to 100, if 100 is we, we've achieved that, that, that goal of being, you know, walking and bikes, bicycling is encouraged to be safe. If 100 is there, where, where do you think we are in the?
It's hard to say on that scale. I would say that from a safety perspective right now, looking purely at crashes that have occurred over the last 10 years, there have been relatively few crashes involving bicyclists and pedestrians. That said, there have been two or three, I don't recall offhand, pedestrian fatalities in the last decade. So clearly, there's room for improvement. Overall, the, the number of crashes in the city is fairly low. What we heard from the public, though, is some of that, I think, is because people sometimes simply don't undertake walking or biking activities because they may not feel comfortable doing it. I spoke to a number of residents at public meetings who say they would love to bike more, but they really only feel comfortable putting their bike in their van and driving over to one of the trailheads and riding on the Osagi or riding on the Millennium Trail. They wouldn't feel safe from their, their neighborhood biking to that trail because of some of the streets that they have to cross. And one of the things that the plan calls out is the vast majority of streets in Superior are relatively quiet neighborhood streets that are fine for biking and, biking and walking along. The issue is primarily the bigger, busier streets that divide up the city. So if you, if you think of Tower or Belknap, East Second cuts off most of the waterfront. People have to cross those streets at some point to get to wherever it is they want to go, and that's where the real issue arises. It will be interesting to see, a lot of the crash data that we looked at was from before Belknap was reconstructed. Belknap, since being reconstructed, has better pedestrian crossings than it had previously. It has bike lanes on a portion of it and shared lane markings on another part. So it will be interesting to see if the number of crashes along that corridor decrease, and hopefully they will over time. So I would say that the city, purely looking at crash numbers, isn't too bad, but some of that, I think, is because people aren't comfortable making biking and walking trips they may want to make.
Okay, yeah, that's fair.
Counselor, I just wanted to add that a useful tool, that it's not without its flaws or critics, WalkScore.com is always a fun little thing that can rate any city or even individual neighborhood. And I just ran our numbers real quick. Superior is 42 out of 100 on a walkability score, calling it a car-dependent city. And just for fun, I ran my own address, which is a lot of you knows, near the university. That has a walking score of 61 out of 100.
So 100 being, we've achieved it, right?
100 would be like Times Square.
Okay.
Yeah, the best you can possibly have.
Right. So Superior's use, I know, I know you mentioned that it's, that it's low. How, how low is it compared to other cities with, with our footprint? I mean, we, we've got a massive footprint. So like, how, I guess, underutilized is our sidewalks, our roads for, for walking and biking?
It's, that's a little hard to say. There is not reliable count information that, that's available in most cities for walking and biking. Superior isn't alone in that area, certainly. I would just say it's hard to say. I, I would say that there is certainly more interest in walking and biking from what we heard through the public comments that we received. heard through the public comments that we received. As far as overall and communities that I've worked in across Wisconsin, Superior, particularly having a university, I would say has a bit lower walking and biking utilization than some other cities. I think of work in Stevens Point, which has much higher walking and biking. But I also think it's a larger university there. It's also less of a commuter campus than the UW is here or WITC. So that's part of it as well. Your footprint is certainly part of it as well, and kind of the spread of different neighborhoods. And part of what we looked at, again, particularly with the priority bikeway projects, was recommending just a handful of projects that can run longer distances to tie together, say, the East End and the more central part of the city, or down to South Superior and the more central part of the city. Between kind of those nodes of activity, there will be less happening, and I would encourage the city to really focus on areas where they think the utilization will be highest.
So is the goal of the, like the implementation of this, is the goal to increase walkers and bikers, or is it to make the current levels of walkers and bikers more safe? Or both? Does one come with the...
Both. So a real target for the plan was to go after what are known as kind of interested but concerned bicycling people, for the most part. There have been a number of studies that look at the general population and how they think about biking. And about 2% to 3%, I want to say, are kind of fall into what they call the strong and fearless category. Road riders, people who will ride kind of in any condition, that's very few people. Then there's another 7% or 8% of the population who are kind of in the enthusiastic and confident category. They'll ride in a lot of conditions, but they wouldn't go out and ride on East Second right now. They're pretty comfortable with traffic. Again, a pretty small slice of the population. And then there's about 60% of the population who are what fall into kind of the interested but concerned category. These are people who would like to bike more, but they have some of those safety concerns I mentioned before. They might have a bike that they ride a few times a year, but they mainly go to the trail or they just ride around the block with their kid. They'd like to do more, but they have safety concerns about it. And then there's a third of the population who will never ride a bike. They're just, for whatever reason, they have a disability, they're not interested, they won't ride a bike. So the plan's recommendations are really targeted at that 60% of the population, looking to make, to provide a network that will help them ride more like they would like to do. Now, when you provide a network that allows those people to bike more and allows parents to feel more comfortable about their children biking, that also serves people who are already biking and walking better. They will have safer facilities that are out there, they will have better connected facilities. So it makes improvements for people who are already walking and biking, but it also hopefully allows other people who would like to walk or bike more to do so.
Okay. I just have two quick questions, and then I'll leave you alone. What level of response did you have from the public with this? I know this started a long time ago, and I know there was meetings and surveys and all that. What kind of data did you have to go off of?
Input from the meetings, I thought, was reasonably good. I don't recall the numbers offhand. There were a few dozen people at each of the bigger public meetings that we had. In addition, city staff were out at a number of other public events, so East End Days and a few of the others with a table out there to talk to people who might not otherwise come out to the public meeting. We also had an online map that people could input information from the comfort of their home about walking and biking conditions. For a community the size, I felt that the input was quite good. You know, I work in much larger communities where you may see more people, but not substantially more. So I felt that the input was good. Again, the input that we received was almost universally supportive of the plan. There were people who had questions and concerns about costs, primarily costs, more than anything, of implementation. But generally, the public was very supportive of the idea of planning and of trying to make Superior an easier place to walk and bike.
Okay. Then the last question I had is in the slide. I know you're switching around. It's from saying ZAGSTER to just bike share. But in that proposal language that you recommended, you mentioned that the ZAGSTER program was a success, and I got to ask you, what are you basing that on?
It was used. I don't have the actual numbers that were in front of me, and we can certainly tweak the language. You know, looking at bike-share systems across the country, usage in them varies widely from an average of less than one ride per day to, I think, bikes in, you know, in Manhattan see seven or eight rides per day, per bike. I would expect Superior and most Wisconsin cities to be on the lower end of that scale. But I think that if you're providing a service that is being used, that's largely successful, especially if costs to the municipality to do so are fairly low. You know, there's benefit in providing people that opportunity to use bikes.
Okay. And then just, that's all I had for you. I don't know if this would be a question for Chris or for Mayor Payne, but, well, I guess maybe Chris. At the very beginning, you said you're looking for the approval, basically to get the green lights, you guys can start moving forward with some of the changing. I guess, how binding is the approval of this tonight on, you know, what you guys do, you know, moving forward?
Well, approval tonight doesn't bind the council to any actual, for future actions. I mean, what it basically does is philosophically puts a rubber stamp on the plan and says, hey, as a council, we looked at this, we reviewed it, and we philosophically believe what the fundamental ideas put forward by the plan. And in general, the recommendations are ones that we think would benefit the city of Superior moving forward. Moving any of the specific recommendations forward, they all probably likely still require committee review and discussion and council approval, like any large infrastructure projects are going to require, you know, funding and contracts to be put in place. Even policy-type recommendations are often ordinance revisions, which requires committee review and council approval.
Okay. So this just kind of gives you a...
It's a roadmap.
Yeah, yep, okay, nope, that's fair. I think that is, is that, would it be proper to make a motion?
Yes.
For an amendment? I'd like to make a motion to remove all the wording.
Oh, I'm sorry, not an amendment yet. We don't have a motion to approve yet.
Got it. I'll wait.
Councilor Van Sickle? I thought you had your line up before. Councilor Sweeney? Councilor Sweeney?
I didn't hear you mention the tourism aspect of favorable walking and biking. Was that, is that a component at all?
Yeah, I think...
Well, either you don't have to answer that if you didn't do the study, so I'm not trying to put you on. Whoever wants to answer that.
Well, I'll give my answer, then you can give yours. I mean, I think we'd make the recommendation, or we'd make, follow through on the recommendations because it most benefits the citizens of Superior. But also, I think what benefits the citizens of Superior also benefits people that come to our city to visit. You know, if they come to walk around our beautiful city, or they bring their bikes, the same network that our residents would be using to get around the city, they would be using as well, so it's a benefit to them.
The plan does talk about economic benefits of walking and biking, which is primarily related to increased tourism. Bicycling as a whole is a multi-billion-dollar industry in Wisconsin, both from manufacturers who are based here, like Trek, but in large part through bicycle tourism. And there's been a lot of growth of that over the last decade. We see it up on the North Shore, we see it over in Door County. A big push for promoting bicycle-friendly places to help draw in tourism. So the plan does discuss that, and as was just mentioned, improvements that benefit tourism also benefit local residents.
And my next question is, what benchmarks have you set up to determine success?
Well, the plan doesn't lay out specific benchmarks, but did recommend, again, that the city start to monitor more closely how many people roughly, and again, these are estimates, are walking and biking, to look at the safety, the crashes that involve people walking and biking, so seeing if we're improving safety with it. There are some specific recommendations about measuring both what's implemented and then what the outcomes of that implementation are, either through usage or safety.
But wouldn't that be somewhat of a starting point to determine if this is successful as we move down? Are we increasing bike riding? Are we increasing steps per, whatever it is?
Right. And yes, one of the recommendations is to look at, to start trying to get some of that count information. It's relatively easy to count cars on streets. There's equipment to do that fairly easily. Counting people walking and biking is a little more challenging, but there are ways to do it. And one of the recommendations is that the city start to look into that.
And Councilor Sweeney, the plan captures some starting data, and we have access to some other starting data to compare it to as well, from a variety of sources. The police is, the police are doing much more comprehensive crash data than they ever used to, and the MIC in the past 10 years has been collecting much more data about bikes and Peds. So the data's out there for us to capture, to at least create that starting point.
Further questions? Councilor Bender?
Yes, I don't have a question. I just, I don't have a question, I just have a, I just have a statement, that I've ridden my bike down 28th Street, through the Millennial Trail and back, and survived. And I've done that more than once, so the system does work.
That is good.
Are there further questions? Councilor Van Sickle?
I just, I just want to comment quickly that I served on this committee, and it's been over for a while, and I have to admit that this is one of the largest, most robust committees I have ever served on. The dedicated professionals on this committee who saw transportation as a discipline. It was refreshing, it was interesting, and again, one of the most impressive groups that I've ever had the privilege of working with. And you didn't say this, Chris or Kevin, but for those of you who don't know, Tool Design is the absolute gold standard in this line of work. So while this has been in the works for a long time, it's exciting that we have come this far, and we held a lot of public meetings that, I think one of the most interesting dynamics of that is the range of people that showed up, interested, with ideas, with criticisms, with corrections. And while not everybody can make every public meeting, it is helpful when we get to this stage. So I want to thank the staff for the work and the hours and the weekends and all of the events and the councilors that did come, because everybody there was a part of creating what's in front of us now. It was a massive effort, and I just want to say I'm really proud of the work and thank you for all of the effort and intelligence. It's inspired, and I thank you.
Are there further questions? Okay, seen, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the plan with the recommended revisions from Tool Design.
Motion approved, second.
Motion is by Councilor Dean, second by Councilor Bender. Discussion, Councilor Fennessey.
I'd like to make a motion to remove all wording in the report where it mentions anything related to the city keeping a focus on hosting a bike-share program.
Okay, the motion is to remove, can you state the motion again?
Simply remove in the report where it mentions anything related to the city keeping a focus on hosting a bike-share program.
I will second.
The amendment, the motion is to amend the plan to remove any language relating to the city hosting a bike-share program, correct?
Correct.
That motion is by Councilor Fennessey, the second by Councilor Sweeney. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Councilor Van Sickle?
Based on what?
Councilor, you have to address your questions.
Can the chair clarify the amendment's intent or purpose, or what type of bike-share? There are hundreds of models.
I cannot clarify the intent. Councilor Fennessey, would you like to answer the question?
Yes, what was the question? First, why? Because it wasn't used?
Councilor Van Sickle, Councilor Fennessey, as for...
Yeah, second, to define the bike-share program, I think keeping it pretty broad accomplishes what I'm looking to do. I think the city, we entered into it, you know, two years ago, and it was a failure, and I don't want to see us go down that road again.
Councilor Van Sickle, floor reverse, to you.
It was not a failure. The only failure I see here is celebrating the cancel, the ending of ZAGSTER. Based on what? I don't know. Just because one person doesn't use it doesn't mean they should translate those personal animosity that impacts the rest of the community that way.
Is there further discussion on the amendment? Seen none. I'll proceed by roll call. The question is to, whether to amend the plan to remove any language relating to the city hosting a bike-share program.
Councilor Van Sickle. Councilor Bender. Councilor Sweeney. Councilor Fennessey. Councilor Elm. Councilor Ludwig. Councilor Sutherland.
Yes.
Councilor Kern. And Councilor La Dean.
The motion fails. Main motion is the adoption of the plan. Is there further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. I just want to also express my thanks to Tool Design. I was going to make the comment about being the gold standard. Believe it or not, there are people that talk about consultants and bike and ped planners, and I'm friends with a number of them, and they all spoke very highly, and I also appreciated the volume of work that you put into this, and I think this is a fantastic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. It was enjoyable coming up to work here.
Thank you.
Item 10.2, Planning Director Circa is recommending approval of the release of utility easements in previously vacated property at 5627 Albany Avenue.
Motion is by Councilor Bender, the second by Councilor Fennessey. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
10.3, Planning Director Circa is recommending approval to relocate $50,000 from the Economic Development Fund back to the small business grant program.
Motion is by Councilor Van Sickle, the second by Councilor Elm. Is there discussion? Councilor Kern?
I have no problem with moving it back, but in light of, you know, further restrictions that just are in place within the next day or two, as far as capacity limits and whatnot in the direction that we do not know where this pandemic's going. I said I got no problem going back and forth, but do we know if there's any projects in the hopper that are looking at, that could be hounding on?
On the small business grant program?
Yeah.
Yes, there are a number of businesses, both new businesses looking to open in the city of Superior, and I think one or two existing businesses that are looking for projects. So there are requests on this money.
As I say, I just want to make sure that we're not just lumping it over there and then possibly having to look at doing something else in the future, with the uncertainty of everything that's going on.
This proposal would leave a little over $8,000 in the small business relief, in the Economic Relief Fund as well. So while if there was a rush, obviously, we wouldn't be able to fill them all, but if there were applications tomorrow for that money, we could at least fill some of them, a number of them, actually.
Okay, and then we're also looking at January 1 of reloading the overall program, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Motion carries.
10.4, Director Circa is recommending approval of a land lease agreement between the City of Superior and Board of Regents of the University of Wisconsin System, University of Wisconsin Superior for continued use of Montreal Pier as a freshwater ballast, water testing site.
The motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counsel Ludwig. Is there discussion? I just want to point out, this feels like a minor item on our agenda, counselors, but if you get the opportunity post-pandemic, please go and visit this site. I'm sure the university would love to give you a tour, but this is, I believe, the only site of its kind on the entire Great Lakes. And as federal regulation from both the United States and Canada increases on the shipping industry to test for invasive species, freshwater testing is becoming increasingly in demand, and the industry is largely being led by the scientists in Superior, Wisconsin. It's pretty groundbreaking stuff, and it could dramatically change the shipping industry. I don't know how to put this better, it's pretty cool. Go check it out. Further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
10.5, Director Circa and Manager McNamara are recommending approval of request from Enbridge, Inc. to purchase .59 credits from the City of Superior Compensatory, Wet Land and Mitigation Bank. Tripping over my tongue.
Motion is by Counsel Elm, the second by Counsel Fennessey. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
10.6...
Mayor? Mayor?
I'm sorry, who is that?
Terry, this is Jason, I'm sorry. Terry, can you, we have 10.11 as well, don't forget that.
Well, that's on the amended agenda. Mr. Circa, we'll get to that.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the very last item.
Apologies.
10.6, Parks Recreation and Forestry Director Kadat is recommending approval to award the Fair Lawn Mansion Boiler Replacement Project to Jamar Company for the proposed not-to-exceed amount of $32,795.
Motion is by Counsel Kern, second by Counsel Bender. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
10.7, Director Kadat is recommending approval of a new agreement to extend and modify the terms with North Shore SUP LLC Land Lease and Use Agreement.
Motion is by Counsel Kern, second by Counsel Elm. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
10.8 is a resolution introduced by the Department of Parks Recreation and Forestry in the City of Superior, supporting proclamation of world migratory, I can't speak tonight, I'm sorry, migratory bird celebration for the week of October 10 in the City of Superior.
Motion is by Counsel Ludwig, second by Counsel Bender. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.9 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division to set a public hearing for the 2001 through 2025 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan and the 2021 Action Plan.
Motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counsel Fennessey. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.10 is a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Superior to call on Burlington Northern Santa Fe to resume payments of claims submitted for abatement of dust residue. I did receive some emails yesterday and today supporting the resolution, one from Crystal and Brian...
Well, I'm sorry, let's get...
Want to go that?
Yeah. Yeah. Motion is by Counsel Van Sickle, the second by Counsel Ludwig. Sorry, what were you saying about the...
Just letters in support from Crystal and Brian Lallande, Melissa Pratt, Julie Herrick, Kim Backland-Weisger, and Pete and Suzanne Payne.
I believe all those went to the council, right?
Yeah, they also went to the council, but I just want to read them into the record.
Discussion, Counselor Van Sickle?
Thanks for managing those.
Your mic, please, Counselor.
Thanks for managing those, Terry. And I plan to forward the ones that came to council, just so they can be in the minutes, if that's okay.
Sure.
Well, I just, it's been a really trying four months. I just want, I want to take this opportunity to provide the council with some background. I'm certainly open to hearing questions or reservations, but more than anything, an opportunity to learn more about what's going on with your neighbors. I mean, I'm comparatively pretty new to town, and I think everybody here is at least vaguely familiar with the tachtonite dust situation. Sidewalks, driveways, play equipment, carpets, window sills, pets, fences, boats, campers, all wear a steady coating of tachtonite residue, although none of that is compensated. Homeowners calculate the square footage of their homes, and one outbuilding typically a garage, and the railroad has an algorithm in which they decide what per square inch it would cost to clean your house. Just as a timeline here, in July, I learned about claims, the claims payment process being suspended after residents started contacting me about denials. I spent a lot of time making and receiving calls within the neighborhood and with the railroad. These have largely been supportive and inquisitive. I rent, so these are not payments that I receive or have ever filed for, so I've had to learn a lot of that documentation process. I started documenting a lot of the repairs and the impact of the tachtonite. The research, if you're interested, dates well back to the war and how stressed the military was in finding, in producing steel. And that certainly is across state lines, it's extensive and it's ongoing. I tracked down three former city attorneys dating back to the 60s and consulted my two predecessors, because I wanted to see this issue in detail and from a broad perspective. I'm proud to say that this resolution has their support and enthusiasm. It's nearly two decades of second district representation. In August, I set up a tour for state and federal representatives. We walked around, we talked to neighbors, many who were outside cleaning and painting, taking advantage of the last warm weekend. I've worked with local news to tell a fair and factual account of the suspension. I'm continuing to work with BN Government Affairs Coordinator Lydia Bjorgi. There was finally some movement where the railroad recognized 24 houses that they would allow to continue submitting claims that would be payable. That's 24 out of 200, so that's about an eighth, although those households have not yet been notified who they are, and I've requested a map, but that has not yet been provided. In September, I spent a lot of time writing letters to different offices all over the United States. Our state reps also sent correspondence to their claims departments, which Texas to Washington State, they sent those letters out. Lydia has informed me that they are still scheduling meetings to discuss the issue, its progress. This effort has, though, been enormous, and I have not cut any corners here. Now, that brings us to October. I've done a lot more research, and I wrote the resolution. I'm hoping that we can encourage the railroad to come back to this partnership. However informal, the claims payment process has spanned five decades. You know, there are a lot of opportunities in our work here, and a few examples of our advocacy-based resolutions. Every single example I list here passed unanimously in the abstract. The resolution here, though, is coming from our actual tax-paying residents, asking us for their, for our support, just the same, a concrete statement of solidarity that we do not deny large industry or lobbying efforts. Just a couple of those are the resolution requesting support of the Superior City Council for Husky Energy Private Project Labor Agreements, a resolution from the City of Superior Counselors supporting the restoration of state income tax reciprocity between Wisconsin and Minnesota, a resolution endorsing Better City for the downtown district, a resolution introduced declaring fiber optic networking as an essential infrastructure in the city, a resolution opposing a rate increase by Superior Water, Light &amp; Power, and finally, a resolution asking the council support of the Nemetschek Trail Energy Center. I cannot speak to all past resolutions, it's true, Husky opted not to go with PLAs despite unanimous support from this council, but I don't regret supporting that effort because I believed in it, just as I believe in this. This resolution is no last resort effort, but being introduced, I think, at the right time, in a trajectory of what I feel will be a long process. I'm willing to work through it with our most precious and powerful resource, our residents. There is no searing rebuke here of the railroad, and I want to be really clear about that, because many residents right in my neighborhood are proud of their long careers with the railroad. And so I want to thank the counselors that have reached out to me. I know it's, I've appreciated those conversations. I want to thank the people at BN for navigating the situation with me. It's a challenging time in our long history together. I want to thank State Senator Janet Beulie, Representative Nick Milroy, and Senator Bob Joug, who have, in Senator Baldwin's office, who have all been extraordinarily helpful. The railroad, as you can probably guess, is a massive entity, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts, quite literally, but most of all, the residents. I know you guys have probably seen most of the emails, both current and former, who are sharing their stories and their history with this conveyor belt, and sharing those with all of us in support of each other and of this resolution. You know, with that said, I spoke, I spoke to a BNSF representative just this morning, and I want, I just want to say, they are hearing us. And, you know, this is not a neighborhood that is complaining, but this is a neighborhood that is in distress. And out of respect to the conversation that I had with the railroad today, I feel hopeful for a positive and fair result. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this resolution until our next meeting.
The motion to postpone is by, to postpone until the next meeting is by Counsel Van Sickle, the second is by Counsel La Dean. Is there discussion on the motion to postpone?
Mayor Payne.
Counsel Southern.
May I ask for clarification, the reasoning for postponing?
I'll let Counselor Van Sickle clarify, but she said she spoke to a representative of the BN this morning and was hopeful for a positive resolution, and out of respect to that conversation, she was asking for a postpone. Is that correct, Counselor? She indicated that's correct.
Yes.
And then one more thing, I'd just like to reach out to Counsel Van Sickle and say good work on this.
Thank you.
I think it's a lot of work, I can imagine all the hours you put into it. Might see us not, see us agree eye to eye a lot, but this one we're here, I'm with you on that one, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good work, Counselor.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And standby counselors, we have an amended agenda.
Item 10.1 is the amended. Planning Director Circa is recommending approval of a sanitary sewer line easement crossing unimproved rights of way of 23rd Avenue East and 16th Street due to the construction of their new office on Stinson Avenue, and that would be Enbridge.
Motion is by Counsel Fennessey, the second by Counsel Bender. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we have no further business and are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.